No, I was telling everybody.
Good evening, everyone. We are going to call to order the special meeting of the South Euclid Lynn Hurst Board of Education work session. Today is December ninth, twenty twenty-five, and the time is six oh two P M. May we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenburg?
Here.
Mrs. King?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Sanders? Mrs. Shelby?
Here. Item two, the minutes. The minutes of the regular meeting of November eleventh, twenty twenty-five will be approved as recorded or corrected. Furthermore, the reading of these minutes will be waived. May we get a motion to approve item two point one?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call?
Ms. Falkenburg?
Aye.
Mrs. King?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Sanders?
Aye.
Mrs. Shelby?
Aye. Item three, discussion items.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn discussion items over to our Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Thompson, and her special honorary guest up front here.
So, thank you. Good evening, everyone. To the board, thank you for the opportunity. Just to briefly share this safety update. This presentation, I'll start by stating that it will be posted online. And having the conversation with Dr. Cable, we determined that there might be some that want to see the presentation in its entirety, dig deeper. I'm going to go through rather quickly with this slides because I certainly want to give the opportunity for some feedback from our school resource officers, from Lynn Hurst Police Department and South Euclid Police Department. I want you to hear from them with regard to our safety efforts in the district. So, by all means, we'll go through, but again, it will be posted online later. So, River, we can go to next. So, I want to begin first with an acknowledgement and appreciation to Mr. Wiley. So, Mr. Wiley resigned, as you know, to pursue another opportunity. We're happy for him and excited for that, for him. But I certainly would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the fact that he did a lot while he was here in our district. Certainly to, you know, raise awareness with our security guards and their work, creating a rubric with our building principles. Also, he took pride in safety and our practices, our procedures, very instrumental in our use of Evolve. And even when he moved on, he made sure that our building principles and our safety services team were prepared to continue to use the Evolve system without incident. Raptor and the visitor management piece of that, the emergency notification that comes through Raptor, and also our drill documentation also is managed through Raptor. So, we want to definitely give acknowledgement and appreciation to Mr. Wiley for the wonderful support that he provided in the district through his service. And so, last year with, I do want to say, I'm sorry, River, when you go to the, she clicked on the link there. This is from our website, and everything that has been in place continues to be in place. Nothing has changed. So, it is important to point out that we're not missing any of the key items that have been added over the past several years as it relates to safety services and emergency planning. Go back. Thank you, and next slide. So, in our transitioning from last year to this year, I really wanted to ensure with our safety and emergency planning, our safety services, that we had alignment with the state of Ohio. And that, of course, is going to guarantee our access to resources, the best practices that are occurring in the state of Ohio, and also making sure that we are consistent with the prevailing legislation. And so, you'll see that we are following Ohio's comprehensive school safety framework developed by the Ohio School Safety Center and those agencies that are listed there. Tyler and I had a great opportunity this past school year to work with the Safety Center. They did trainings for us, tabletop exercises, trainings that we went to also with our law enforcement partners. So, it's a free service to us, free resources and support to the school district. So, we have access to them. They've been in communication with me since Tyler's departure, and they are available and willing to provide support as needed in the work that they do in the state of Ohio. With this framework, you'll see that genuinely safe, supportive schools meet the needs of the whole child. School climate, safety, and learning are not separate endeavors, but it really is a school-wide approach integrating mental health and the PBIS framework. And so, this is the framework. This is what Ohio believes, and this is what we are following in our work. There are goals and objectives for school safety that have been provided by this group in terms of what and how we should be implementing our work as it relates to school safety. Certainly, that prevent, protect, mitigate, and respond, recover. That was an area that certainly, again, Tyler was very instrumental in leading. And we are working to strengthen these and other areas that you see listed here. And so, and these are also, of course, critical to our safety work. So, O D E, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, have identified these areas of also keeping students physically and emotionally safe. So, I'm going to go briefly through each of these areas and highlight a few things, but I really want, again, give some opportunity to our school resource officers to share and dig deeper into some of the work that they're doing here in the district, okay? So, our anti-harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So, we know that we've had the form in place. Ms. Emmler manages that for the district, so forms go in through the school. Families complete the form, students may complete the form, sometimes our staff, our principals will complete the form. Ultimately, it gets to Ms. Emmler so that she's able to document and record. We are required to do that. She manages that. The other thing that she'll do is look at those forms to see if there is something that might be addressing Title Nine that needs a further investigation, and then she will connect with me on that. Tips also come in through the Safer Ohio School tip line. Again, this is provided as a result of the Ohio School Safety Center. It is at no cost to us as a school district. And certainly, prevention is key. And our school counselors, our school social workers, student support, and youth development specialists, it's based on those relationships that they have and those connections that they're making with our students. And certainly, our school resource officers. So, this is a really cool PowerPoint presentation that they put together. I'm not going to go through it in its entirety, but I would like for you to see, this is the PowerPoint that they prepared to deliver to our elementary school students. And what you'll see, again, you'll have access to this, you'll see next slide, if you could just click on that next one for me, River, number two. So, the PAW Patrol, we know PAW Patrol, right? So, PAW Patrol keeps Adventure City safe, and our school resource officers, Lynn Hurst Police Department, South Euclid Police Department, they work together to keep our cities and our schools safe. And so, they'll be sharing this presentation. You know, in the last newsletter, in student services area, there was an acknowledgement of our school resource officers having greater involvement and presence in our schools. We want our parents to know, we want our students to know, that you're going to see them around, and that's a good thing. It doesn't mean anything is bad. It means that the relationships that they're working on are working because you see them present and active in our schools and in our classrooms. So, we can go back to the presentation, River. So, certainly, discipline, PBIS, that's our student code of conduct, due process. I will say that next week, Ms. Bussie, Ms. Emmler, Mrs. Moles, and Ms. Morris are going to be having a conversation with our building principals and our assistant principals as it relates to discipline, student code of conduct, support for students with disabilities. And so, that is, again, part of Ohio's tenants for school safety of things that we need to be doing, discipline, PBIS. Suicide prevention, violence prevention, social inclusion, and school safety requirements. So, this is part of House Bill one twenty-three. If you click on, and River, you don't have to click on each, but they are hyperlinked. These are requirements, again, of House Bill one twenty-three. We are actively implementing that, and by we, I mean Ms. Emmler and our school social workers, our school counselors. They have a plan in terms of how they are implementing this as part of our instructional program. Again, not taking away from student instruction. They're doing it in times that are most appropriate. In the school day, they're doing, you know, building-wide activities with like Start With Hello, and there are other things that are occurring. Again, this is legislatively driven, so we are in compliance. You'll also see, and you've probably seen around the district, also streaming on our website, that nine eight eight number. That is something that's also required. We are sharing that. You'll see that in many of the things that the district will put out, including, again, on the website. I'll say that parents always have the opportunity to opt out. That's part of House Bill eight, the Parents' Bill of Rights, but it's also part of that legislation. With behavioral threat assessment, again, legislatively driven, it is important to note that all threats are investigated. We utilize the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, the C-stag model, Dr. Dewey Cornell. Our staff have been trained, those that are serving on this multidisciplinary team, as well as Ms. Emmler. Again, what we find, there's sometimes overlap with the bullying, harassment, threats, and intimidation in those situations. And so, certainly, she is participating in those meetings to make sure that she's catching those things where there are points of overlap and where I may need to get involved. Our school resource officers are available to participate if there is something that, of course, rises to the need for law enforcement intervention and response. So, as part of the Safer Ohio School tip line, ooh, reports, I have typo, I see, it'll be corrected, like, whoa. That is, I'm way distracted because, you know, that like kills me, so I've lost everything that I need to say. So, the Safer Ohio tip line, we know that that is around everywhere. Also, you'll see that on our websites, posted, and those things. However, it's important to note that when we register, again, no cost to the district, we are required to share the contact information for our local law enforcement. So, if there is a tip that is reported, it is going to be automatically sent to our local law enforcement. They will contact us. We're working together immediately should that need arise. Next slide, let's hurry up and get away from that slide with the typo. So, human trafficking prevention, again, legislatively driven, Senate Bill two eighty-eight. And so, you see there, Officer Tamara, former school resource officer, retired, and still present consultant, and actively doing the work in here in the district, and this was just last week. And so, we are required to do this work. Every year, we're doing the same content to some degree. And so, this year, we wanted to add our law enforcement partners in the conversation. We're still, of course, following what is legislatively required, but also wanting to add that practical information, that knowledge, that application, so students know what to do should there be a need. Again, these are hyperlinked. Everyone will have the opportunity to take a look at that. But the last slide, and then I will defer to our friends here. School safety is about strong relationships, and we have been fortunate in our school district, preceding legislation and all of the requirements. We've had a strong presence and partnership with our law enforcement partners forever. And I can recall even coming into the school district, and Officer Tamara and I will sometimes laugh about it. You know, I came here in the twenty thirteen, fourteen school year, so it's been quite a while. And she preceded me being here in the district, and just that level of commitment of working together, communicating, and having a strong presence. We are very fortunate in our school district to have them. And so, with that, I wanted them to have the opportunity to share with you, this is just a snapshot of some of the points of connection that we have and the things that we do together. But again, I wanted them to be able to share with you what they do in our schools to work together with us to keep our students, our staff, safe, and to create that environment where those strong relationships are maintained and established. So, why don't we start with you, Detective Beal, and you can just share a little bit about what you're doing. I know most recently was that mediation, but by all means, please share.
Well, as far as the meetings go, I'm Alan Beal. I'm with Lynn Hurst Police. I've been there since two thousand fifteen, and I'm detective and SRO there. Dave Lazzada and Kathy are my partners in Lynn Hurst. And Joe Delillo, you guys probably all know, is South Euclid. But as far as Ms. Thompson said, as far as communication, we're all in a group chat together. So, we're, I mean, even behind the scenes, we're constantly talking about what's going on in the community. I work with the Patrol Division enough to where things going on in the community that maybe spill over into the school, I tip them off. Vice versa, Delillo does that with us as far as things going on in South Euclid. But yeah, we've been meeting a lot ever since Tyler left, and really, it's just been like, I mean, smooth sailing since. It's really, nothing's changed. Now, just our point of contact is more Melissa Thompson. Handle with care. That goes into, again, what's going on in the community. I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with it, but if we, for instance, get a call, you know, I'll let Dave Lazzada know, hey, there was a domestic last night at three in the morning. Our officers were there. You know, the little kids were, you know, up, and they saw mom or dad get arrested, whatever the case may be. We just put an email out to a certain group that they can just let those teachers know, not what happened, but something happened with that family. Just to give them a heads up, you know, if that kid's falling asleep at his desk, you know, ease up on them, those kind of things. Mediations, we have all the time. Dave and Kathy and I, and like ninety-nine percent of the time, they end, you know, with us not having to charge anyone, you know, it usually gets alleviated through the school. But it's definitely a better step than just going right into charging, and it gives the kids a chance to communicate. That's really all I got. What's trending now, I don't know. Yeah, that's really it.
Yeah, I mean, really, and so, he shared that there is the text thread that we have. So, if there's something, and they're like, you know, give me a call, there's something going on, need you to know, I'll, that's what's trending now. So, whatever's happening in real time, if there's something that needs to be shared, if they are issuing a warrant, I know sometimes that's been like a, hey, giving you a heads up, no action, or action needed. We might need to be more vigilant in terms of, you know, what we do for access to the building, not wanting people to feel alarmed or concerned, but rather, if there's something that we need to know, they're always willing to let us know what we need to know. So, Officer Tamara, you want to come up and share? We just go down the line?
Down the line, okay. Well, I've been here since nineteen oh eight.
Use the mic, so they can hear you.
Oh, I have to speak on the mic?
We can hear your voice.
Okay, no pressure. So, I have been here for a while, and I can speak probably as far as the longest tenure out of these three, that I have been here the longest. And what I have seen when I first started and what we have now with this team of people is absolutely amazing. I'm going to brag just a little bit because I see it, I live it, I breathe it. We couldn't really have a better unit here that cares about your kids more. I mean, there is true caring and connection and communication, and I- And one of us will go talk to them, and it makes it better. If we are having, you know, something that's going on at home with them, and we feel like, you know, let's just talk to the school and see if there's something else we can do, that information is shared. And I really can't say enough about the information sharing because it's invaluable. It gives us an edge and helps us to know, this isn't the time to really start to talk to this child in a way that's going to, we don't ever want to scare them, but sometimes we have to tell them the realities of life. And by sharing in this information, it's awesome. I am one of the Alice instructors, all of us here do Alice. We, Sergeant Reese, who's retired, and myself, trained the first go-around of the entire school district along with the students. And I can tell you that probably the best thing we have is our communication with the students. We all possess different strengths and weaknesses, so we hone in on those. If I'm lacking in something, I go to one of them, and vice versa. What, we just had an Alice training, Detective Beal and I, with the staff here, a refresher. And I reminded them what I tell everybody about the school district. You are the boots on the ground here. The teachers are the first responders. And they're the ones, by gleaning the information from their students and building those relationships, that's what's going to keep this safe when perhaps other places don't have that, but we have it. These students are going to talk to the teachers, they're going to talk to other staff members, and they definitely talk to us. When I was the only school resource officer here, and something, we had a couple times that things could have gone kind of sideways. They didn't because the kids were lined up waiting to talk to me, and so, we solved those problems. I'm happy to be a part of it, and I'm happy that we get to have this connection, interaction, and keeping everybody safe. And now, we have Officer Joe Delillo.
Hi, everyone. I'm Officer Joe Delillo with the South Euclid Police Department. Dr. Cable, our board members, hello. I've been a police officer in South Euclid since two thousand and six. I went to Brush from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand for criminal justice right here in this building. Though I'm a Mayfield graduate, I did spend two years at Brush. And what really motivated me to be a policeman here in this district was my experiences at Brush High School from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand. So, it's been nice spending the school resource officer since two thousand and nineteen. It's mentioning biweekly and quarterly meetings and communicating and having conversations. I probably talk with Detective Beal and Officer Lazzada and Officer Tamara, probably more than officers on my own agency because I work full-time in the schools. And if there's something that we need to talk about, or I like to say, a small fire that we need to put out, we can do that through conversation and working together. I completely understand there's going to be times where we might need to take action as law enforcement officers that refer a matter to juvenile court, and I understand and respect that process. But if we can handle a situation here at the school level utilizing our ISDs, using our school counselors, our principals, and making it a teachable moment so it does not have to go down to juvenile court, I think that's very important if we can avoid that if at all possible. Detective Beal mentioned handle with care, being on the South Euclid side of things. I can't tell how huge that is, and I think I saw Ms. Lee look over and say, I didn't know we had this. But it's a great, great program because at two o'clock in the morning, like I said, if there's an individual where a student's home is broken into, if there's a fight inside the home, or something really, really sinister might happen to that student, the school district might not have any idea about it, and a student could be disciplined or sent to ISD or SMR for sleeping in class. Well, as a matter of fact, they were up all night because they were trying to sleep at the police station because dad was getting booked on domestic violence and mom was at the hospital. This does happen, so it's nice that that's communicated back with the schools. And again, Alan said it best, we don't give the reasons unless it's necessary to who we give them to, but something happened. Meetings with parents, I think Alan went over that. What's trending now, we're continuing to do good work, I think, with the students in our community. We do offer a lot of things that offer student and partnerships with law enforcement. We have the Youth Police Academy that I handle in South Euclid, also a part of Safety Town. Every year, Lynn Hurst invites me to come over, so it's nice to develop relationships with the kids at an early age. I have four buildings. I try to spend time at all of them, mostly I'm at Memorial and Greenview, but I try to visit all four because I think it's nice to establish that rapport right off the bat. So, good things, just to shop with the cop, each kid got five hundred dollars, seven kids were selected to spend how they see fit. They went up to Walmart, and they were excellent representatives of the South Euclid and Hurst School District. I think that was fantastic. It was a very, very nice program to be a part of. Yeah, and continue to collaborate, continue to work, continue to visit our buildings. I think when I first started, and I'll leave you with this, when I first started in the buildings, they're like, why is there a policeman in the building? Why is there a policeman in the building? And now, it's, there's an expectation there's a policeman in the building, that they're walking through the building. It's just, they, the kids K through twelve, I think routinely see us, and I just don't think they're, they don't think anything of it because it's so routine. And yes, we serve a purpose to keep them safe, but for the most part, we're opening lockers and this, that, and it makes for a calmer, cooler, collected school day. Thank you.
And we have Officer Dave Lazzada. Boop, boop. In English, please. I'll black.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Hi, Mom. Okay, I'm Dave Lazzada, the students either call me Lazzada or Officer Dave, one or the other, depends on their grade level. I pride myself on communicating, especially with these students, building rapport. You know, they may have trouble. My background is in adult corrections for the Sheriff Department. I've been with the Lynn Hurst Police Department for ten years, and, no, it's a little longer than that, but twenty, oh, fifteen years, yeah. But the last six of them have been as a school resource officer, and my joy is these kids. You know what? We want to provide a safe, fun, learning environment. We're all here to support the students, the schools, the board, and the teachers through mediation, through conversation. You know, sometimes these kids, I don't know what they encounter at home or in these communities, but I want to give them what they're not missing. One of my goals when I left the Sheriff Department, Officer Tamara referred me for the job, was to prevent those kids from being exposed to those realities in the jail. If I could prevent somebody from going to jail, that's what we want to do. I also want them to, you know, have fun, but don't play no games. I tell them all the time, it's all right to have fun, let's just not play no games, you know? And we help them any way we can. We help them any way we can. These kids at Sunview and Roland and elementary schools, we've been getting in those, and they recognize, sometimes they recognize us from the games because I usually had all the home games and Sunview, and they know I see you at the game, or, you know, their older siblings are playing sports. So, we start building that rapport from kindergarten on up, whether it be Memorial, Junior High School. You know, we got to get to Greenview a little bit more because we're in Lynn Hurst. But that doesn't stop us from going across to South Euclid. So, it's been a good rapport. I usually call Officer John and say, I'm at this school. I'll be up here for a little while saying hello and just greeting the kids. We're also a crisis, we're trained in crisis intervention. You know, things happen, and sometimes, you know, things beyond our control, but if we could let that person know that we empathize with them, that student or adult, let them know we're here for you, and yes, you're going through that, but what can I do, or what could we do to make it better? So, you know, that is really the training we received was pretty good, and I've seen, I've had to use it before. We also do juvenile diversion at the city of Lynn Hurst, and that's to prevent kids from being charged officially through the Cuyahoga County Juvenile Court. They may have been, depends on the offense. Minor offenses, they come to us, we ask them, you know, what's the situation, what's the details? And then, we may assign them maybe an essay, write an apology, maybe you can spend some time with me, you know, cleaning up. But the goal is to prevent them from being involved in the juvenile court down in Cuyahoga County. We've also, you know, the chief have supported us both cities. We also have the Lynn Hurst Police Foundation where we do Safety Town. We also award scholarships, so Brush seniors, Mayfield Heights seniors, and Richmond Heights seniors. We award them with scholarships. We do the Safety Town, we have a golf outing, and this time, we've had food drives a couple of times. This time of year, of course, we give gifts. We go through the schools and- We go through the schools and through Ms. Taylor, and we say, you know what, give us some names, somebody that, you know, going through hard times. And we, you know, we provide them gifts and food, gift cards and things of that nature. So the community itself, I live in Cleveland and this community here, I brag about it all the time, you know, like the schools, the city of Lynnhurst, and you know, this is what they're doing. And this is what we're doing. And I'm just proud to be mentioned in the same breath.
Pain, those things that have been established and strengthened and take our safety efforts to new levels. And so thank you for your time and your attention. Certainly, even in their absence, thank you to our wonderful police chiefs for their support, their willingness to allow us to look at these education components of what law enforcement looks like and having more of that K-12 role and opportunity. So we're very, very blessed in our school district and I'm grateful to be here and as part of this team with them and with Ms. Emmler. Can't leave her out because she helps make it all come together. So thank you.
That was really nice.
Yeah. I just, I just wanted to say, I've got a different relationship. I've been in the district now for 10, 11 years. And Officer Tamara, you were on my first interview committee when I was applying for the Memorial Junior High spot. And kind of was always there for me for my first year or two. Got to develop a relationship, obviously, with the one and only Mrs. Home Rock now. But however, it's been more of a family. My daughters know her, so it goes beyond that. Officer Lazzada, one thing that always sticks out to me, besides everything you do, I'll never forget being at the basketball game a couple of years ago when each kid got to pick on the varsity team and JV team, got to pick somebody from the staff that they go to, that they rely on. And I remember texting my brother and my uncle who were, my uncle specifically, who's in law enforcement, saying, I would really wish you could see this moment right now because I think five or six kids picked Officer Lazzada. So he was running back and forth on who impacted them the most. And I thought that was pretty cool. Detective Beal, you're always there for us. What people don't know is, when I was running Safety Services, things come up, like he said. And having that contact from the detective side is huge. They allow us to get things done outside, meaning that I can call him and say, hey, have you heard about this? And nine times out of 10, they have. So they're able to tip us off and get us moving and always answers the phone and is always there. And what you're doing with the Police Foundation that Officer Lazzada mentioned earlier is awesome. I do enjoy coming to those events because I do appreciate all you guys do for our kids. And Officer Joe, we go back a long time. I was fortunate enough, Officer Joe and I got to work together from almost day one. When we came in, Dr. Reed said, hey, you get an SRO. And I was like, oh, sweet, I'm in. So we went through the interview process and it was a no-brainer. And Officer Joe and I kind of got to build it from there. I remember one of the first conversations, he was like, hey, where do you want me to park? And I said, I want you to park, I want you to park in front of the marquee sign. I want everybody to know that you're here. And I was laughing today when I went to Southland and there was the SUV parked on the sidewalk. And I said, perfect, it's still there. But, yeah. But seeing what you do for the kids, seeing those pictures from Shop With A Cop from over the weekend, always being available and stopping when he's in his cruiser and playing basketball with kids, or when he sees them in the, in the streets, and just that relationship that we've built, I just wanted to say truthfully and from the bottom of my heart, thank you, all four of you, for everything you do because it's a thankless job. Your patients are tested daily and thank you for always being there for our families.
I'll just say real quick, as a mom, thank you. I appreciate all of you greatly. However, to the three of you, I never have to deal with Officer Beal except for the death of all of you. But the three of you know that you've been instrumental in my children's lives, and that's what I appreciate the most. Like Dr. Capel just said, I have pictures in my phone, I'll get a memory from five years ago when my kids are riding a bike and Officer Delillo stops them and he texts me, look who I see in the neighborhood, you know? Or my phone constantly going off over here because Officer Lazzada has had to pay for something from one of my boys, you know? So just making sure that they're good, the fact that Officer Tamara, as she said, has been here, I've been here 13 years, so yeah, she's been here since Aaron. And you know, I, like, we, I talked to your daughter on the phone two days ago and she said something and I honestly, I said, how's your mom? She said, oh, she's good. She just left here last week. And my daughter being nosy goes, oh, yeah, Officer Tamara? And she goes to rambling and talking and just going on and on about you. And that speaks volumes to me because you didn't have to come back. And I don't think people realize that, Officer Tamara. So thank you for coming back and still believing in our children and our district. Everybody knows you. Like, everybody knows Officer Tamara. And I appreciate you for that. So thank you. I don't think people realize that you came back and you have a whole program as well that we offer and that we have implemented in this district as well. So you've done a lot. So you jokingly say you've been here for years and you've been here for ages, but you've also been impactful the entire time, and that's what means the most. So I do greatly appreciate that. Thank you. So thank you so much.
It's been my privilege. And, you know, I say though, when I'm coming in in a wheelchair or a cane, I don't know.
I'll take you out.
I just want to add, I recently wandered into a safety and security class a few weeks ago, and it was amazing to see how far ahead we are than so many other districts. And that is because of you guys. So thank you. And thank you for just being a safe place for our kids.
My thanks comes from the perspective of seeing both community and policing, but then also schools and the way that you all have found a marriage of the three. It is absolutely beautiful to see the community connected to the schools along with policing to where I don't think there's a stigma about going to school, there being a school resource officer, nor needing you all to get involved in any circumstance that may come up. And so to see the way you all react to situations, the way you protect our kids and their reputation, but I think like to our Rock the Block this summer, it was very well-known. It was not an issue with our particular students, right? That's a big deal when it comes to building a confidence in our community. Am I?
No, you're right.
Okay. But yeah, I just, I just want to say that, that marriage of combining schools, community and policing, it's a beautiful thing. It provides a sense of security and safety. Particularly to me as a father, I don't know how much better I could feel about the system you all have built, especially learning what I've learned today. So thank you.
I will say that. I'll piggyback on that real quick. Maybe other students may want to, look at what we have. We've had community events. We haven't had any problems. You all stay ahead of that, Rock the Block, you all stay ahead of that, the Lynnhurst Night Out, our, what was it?
Home base.
Like, you all stay ahead of that. Even our football game. Like, I like, even our football games, like, I will say Detective Beal is back here on the back streets, like, they're making sure nothing is happening. And it's for the safety of our children, but also safety of the community. So thank you.
And I laugh and I look at Officer Joe during one of the comments because, you know, he's Hollywood over here, you know what I mean? And when he, when he, when he's going around, and he does great things across the country, speaking engagements, and every time he would come back and say, and we are so far ahead, Capel, we are so far ahead of other districts, I can't believe, and he would show me some of the things and some of the questions that would get brought up, and I'd see them all shaking in their heads. It's like, it's good to know, you know? Now, our work's not done, that's great, we pat ourselves on the back, but now, you know, how do we continue, hands out if we continue to move forward? But just want to reiterate that piece of.
I don't know if I have one or not.
No, the other one.
I'm older than you and I've been here a lot longer. But I just don't know how to use a signal. I just want to say, and I can't, I think it was you, Melissa, that mentioned communicating with the teachers when there is something that goes on. That is so important. The teachers are there in the classroom, seeing the kids who are not, you know, seeming themselves and not knowing exactly what's going on with them. It is so helpful to know that you're communicating with the teachers so that they can help that student get past what's a horrible, might be a horrible situation. So thank you for that.
One of the key things is, every building is so welcoming. It's like the principal will come out, greet us, and the kids and the staff, it just welcomes you, you know? You come in there, you know you're in the building.
And then I'll also just say, I think, of course, for the current students, but also for prospective students or prospective parents looking to bring their children into the district, hearing about all of the wonderful safety services that are provided and the continual communication within the schools and within each other, really provides like a good amount of like comfort for those parents because not a lot of other districts do that and not a lot of other districts would even communicate safety plans, safety updates, just for everyone to be in the know.
Item four, executive session. We do have a need for executive session for matters of, A, personnel. We will not be taking action while in executive session. We will come back and reconvene and close. So may we get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
At 6:43 PM for the matter of personnel.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.[1742.66]